Hello. Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight, we are in a regular session. It is on or around 7:00 p.m. Today's date is Monday, May 20, 2019. As you can see, I am Acting President Protam this evening. Our normal president, President Nysley, is Acting Mayor. So Acting Mayor Nysley is present with us this evening as well. Mayor Patterson could not join us. First, we begin with establishing a quorum, which we have all council members present this evening. Moving forward, disposition of minutes. We have the regular session, which was held May 6, 2019. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from that meeting?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you. Moving forward with communications. Are there any communications from council members?
I have a communication.
Thank you.
A lot of constituents have called me and emailed about the increasing numbers of mosquitoes as we've had a very wet spring and it's starting to get warm. So I would like to encourage and request people all across the city to do the water maintenance procedures that you need to do for mosquitoes, namely, clean out your gutters, make sure that you don't have pots and things sitting out that has wet, even a tiny amount of water in it. And then that way, we can reduce the amount of mosquitoes. We are concerned about mosquitoes coming through that could be having different types of diseases going through, and it's just good public health. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fall. Any other communications from council members? Yes, Councilmember Katsas.
President Protam, thank you. I do want to remind everyone that we do have a school board meeting coming up on Thursday, May 30, so a week from this coming Thursday. And this one, instead of being at its usual time, 6:30, this is at 6 o'clock at the Athens High School Auditorium.
Thank you. So, May 30, 6:00 p.m., school board meeting at the high school.
Correct, yes.
Thank you. Any other communications from council members? If none, we will move and proceed with reports and communications from elected officials. We will begin with our Law Director Liasson.
No.
Thank you. Moving forward to Acting Mayor Nysley.
Thank you. I've got one update, and this is on the parking meters that are being installed around town. Our Deputy Service Safety Director Ron Lucas let us know that most of them are, the new meters are in on Court Street, and they hope to finish. They've installed 160 meters so far, hoping to finish this week, maybe early next week. And it's at that time that the parking meter time will change with enforcement going from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. So that's two hours longer in the evening. And he did also say that Park Mobile will still be used as a parking app that's downloadable on your iPhone. They are also going to be having a new app called Park Smarter, and the Park Smarter will not charge the transaction fee. So that would be a preferable one. Thanks to the city crews for getting the new meters in.
Thank you, Acting Mayor Nysley. Anything else? I believe that are all the elected officials here. That moves us forward within the agenda to ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 46-19, an ordinance authorizing unneeded or obsolete municipal personal property to be sold by Internet auction, introduced by Councilmember Butler. Any questions or comments? Ordinance 47-19, an ordinance declaring vehicles no longer needed for a municipal purpose, again introduced by Councilmember Butler. Any questions or comments from council or the public? Thank you. Ordinance 48-19, an ordinance closing a portion of Union Street on Sunday, August 25, 2019, for Ohio University's Involvement Fair. And this is introduced by Councilmember Katsas. Any questions, comments, or updates from council or the public? Thank you. Proceeding within the agenda, we are at ordinances for first reading. Typically, there will be a description and brief discussion about the ordinances. We begin with ordinance 49-19, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a grant agreement with the Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council, known as NOPAC, in order to accept NOPAC Energize Community, N E C, grants, introduced by all members of council. Who would like to speak on this tonight?
I can give a little bit of background information.
Thank you.
That the mayor reported to us last week. We've applied for this grant previously, and it's small, but every bit helps. I believe this one is for up to $25,000. Last year, we used the grant monies for some solar features on our bus park, our bus stop benches areas. And this year, the intent is to use benches with a solar feature to them that will be, for the most part, at the pool, but have the added advantages of us being able to take them to other events on city properties around the city.
Thank you, Acting Mayor Nysley. And we do need to determine who would like to speak to this in the next couple of readings.
Also, I'd like to point out that we did talk about last, at the committee meeting, about how this would also help to increase the resiliency of Athens during climate change occurrences, direct shows that may be coming in through, about being able to have places that are off the grid for people to be able to charge necessary phones and other equipment. So I think it's a good grant. You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fall. Any other comments or discussion? And from the public? Thank you. Ordinance 50-19, an ordinance amending the 2019 appropriation ordinance, introduced this evening by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Mr. President Protam. Allow me to read the ordinance. Section 1, the 2019 appropriation ordinance, 140-18, is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums: $34,750 to Judge's Computer Fund; $230 transaction code 300 grant amount from the Supreme Court of Ohio for additional improvements to the municipal court case management system; $18,000 to Athens City Enhancement Fund; $250 transaction code 300 to fund fireworks, America in Bloom, community food initiatives, micro grants, and public art; $1,500 to Water Fund Administration; 740.636 transaction code 500 for new vehicle detailing, and $3,000 to Garbage Fund; 760 transaction code 300 for community food initiatives, composting, and $19,000 to Internal Service Fund; 865.647 transaction code 300 for internal phone system cost savings project, and increase in the total appropriations by said amounts.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions or comments? Yes, Councilmember Grace.
Just a couple of issues. One, I just want to take a moment to say that it's really fantastic that our municipal court was awarded the grant. This is for upgrading some of the computer systems, and this is not coming from our local funds. This was a $34,750 grant that is going to be, well, spent immediately on necessary equipment upgrades, but it's great that they're able to do that without requesting expenditure of local dollars. And then I had a question regarding the transfer to Athens City Enhancement Fund. Do we have a breakdown on that $18,000 for fireworks, America in Bloom, CFI, micro grants? How much is going to what? And there was a question last week about what the public art is.
Well, if you're directing the question to me, and I haven't received a breakdown since I requested it in the last meeting. So the answer, as far as I know, is no. There is no breakdown. But on the other hand, there may be. But the mayor's not here to...
This is the first reading, and I would say that it would be very important for you all to have that information by the second reading, so I'll convey that to administration tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other comments, questions? And thank you, Acting Mayor Nysley, for passing that request on to the administration. No further questions or comments on the appropriation ordinance. That moves us forward to ordinance 51-19, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title IX, General Regulations, Chapter 9.04, Outdoor Fires, Section 9.04.01, Outdoor Fires Without Permit, Unlawful, and Chapter 9.05, Fire Control, Petroleum Liquids, Section 9.05.01, Definitions. And this is introduced this evening by Councilmember Fall. We're also fortunate enough that we have the presence of Chief, Fire Chief Reimer, here this evening as well, to help walk us through questions, concerns, and definitions. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Reimer has more details. Last week, there was a question of why there was a difference between the various distance between certain types of structures, and we did look at that issue, and that there is different numbers with O R C. And we have, through Captain Reimer, decided to make ours a little more stringent because of the unique city architecture in our areas, the density and stuff. So, Captain Reimer, would you like to tell?
Chief Reimer, thank you.
Sorry. Could you...
He's been called worse.
Well, I'm sorry.
I love to be called captain.
Could you please describe all the other things? So that, basically, we are updating our various ways that people can have fires and legal fires in the city of Athens.
Yes, ma'am. Basically, what we did was go through and clean up some of the language. We still have the same distance regulations on certain things, especially for the outdoor open burning. Anything beyond that, so if it's, right now, it's 90 feet. So if you're going 95 to 100 feet, you're going to have to obtain a permit for open burning. For outdoor fireplaces, we're seeing a lot more of those. That's fine, as long as they're being used properly, 20 feet. Remember, a lot of this is coming from the state regulation, other cities that we have looked at. One of the issues that we did have to change, or used to be inside the law, the state law, that anybody would complain about the smoke as a nuisance, especially, and we run into that a lot through here, especially with the hills, the close proximity of other homes, multifamily apartment complexes, they have taken that out. So that is no longer a portion of it. It's, correct me if I'm wrong, Director Eliasson, I believe it was a civil matter, if somebody wanted to complain about smoke, they would have to take that up as a civil matter, is not illegal for us, correct? Yeah. So we're used to, if somebody would call and complain about the smoke, we go down, we put it out. And they happen all over the city. Now, there's really nothing we can do about it except for make sure that they are using it properly. And one of the biggest things is to use clean, dry, seasoned firewood. Usually, when we respond to these, when we get called, sometimes it's other things, like couches, chairs, and... So we're just trying to make it safer. Again, with our community, with the hills, the close proximity, it's a very dense community with the, I won't say transient, but I guess with the constant revolving population, is trying to educate and say, you know, what is safe and what is not safe.
And also, part of, some of the new regulations have to do with when you can describe a fire ban, given weather and those sort of things.
Correct.
And that's a new section under the regulations that are going to be changed.
Correct.
So are there other questions?
Just so I understand completely, "No person shall kindle or cause to be kindled any open fire." And then it goes on later to say that there are approved containers, there are approved covered metal containers, not more than one-half inch mesh. So does that not constitute an open fire?
No, because it is enclosed within that mesh. It keeps the spark arrest down. It'll keep the embers from flying into your neighbor's eaves or what have you.
So if you have such a container and you're even within 20 feet of your garage, you're still okay, as long as you have that container?
As long as you're not within 20 feet of your structure roadway. And we had to put in your roadway and alleyway also, because now you're dealing with cars parked alongside the road. You don't want an outdoor fireplace next to a parked car. You don't want smoke inhibiting the visual impairment of driver driving down the road. So we try and keep that, you know, with those outdoor fireplaces, not within 20 feet.
Sorry. So even, so you cannot have it within 20 feet of your garage, even if it's in a container? Nothing can be within 20 feet of a structure?
Correct.
But you're allowed to have that if 20 feet or greater, if you have that approved container?
Correct. And it's being used properly.
Right.
So the minute they take the top off of it and decide they're going to stuff it full of firewood, that is now considered an open fire, because it doesn't have the lid to it and it's not containing any of those embers.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, Councilmember.
Thank you. I have several questions. My first question was, in general, why the need for this particular ordinance, at least a change in it. And then the second question is, I know we have a definition in the ordinance for outdoor burning, I believe it is, outdoor burning, yeah, but the open fire, we don't really have a definition for that. So I would use some examples, my tiki torch on my backyard to keep these terrible mosquitoes away. If I have three or four of them around, that's actually an open fire, isn't it? So under this ordinance, I think that would be prohibited. I'm a little concerned, too, that the whole concept of saying that you can't have an outdoor fireplace within a certain distance of a residence or a building. I know it's very popular these days to attach fireplaces to decks. People who do that, I suspect, are probably spending a lot of money to make sure the fireplace is safe, and yet it's within the 20 feet of the building. And then we also have the concept of, I can cook out on an open flame charcoal cooker on my deck and have actually possibly much more danger involved in something like that than an open fireplace. So I don't see any real need, and I'm questioning why this 90 feet or 20 feet from a building, a structure, why we have that. But first, my real question is to you is first, why the need for the change?
Again, what we have changed mostly in here is the nuisance. What used to be in there as far as a smoke or nuisance, somebody would complain about that. So that is no longer part of the state law. So we're removing that portion of it. We're getting more clarification as far as the outdoor fireplaces, and as you had mentioned, some people do put in fireplaces. If they're not, if they're going within 20 feet, that is an issue. That's a problem. We want to try and curb that. Again, with our staffing, with our city, the way it is built, it is very difficult. We're trying to find every avenue possible to make sure that we don't really have a, to lessen the fire hazards. As far as the open burning in paragraph H of the ordinance, it describes and defines what open burning is. A portion you had talked about as far as the tiki torches.
Yeah.
Open burning does not include road flares, smudge pots, similar devices associated with safety, occupational use, typically considered open flames, the use of portable outdoor fireplaces, these tiki torches, things of that nature, would, I believe, fall underneath of this.
As acceptable.
As acceptable. Like citronella candles.
But the statute, or the ordinance, says open fire, not open burning, and then the only definition is open burning. Are you saying it's the same thing?
Open burning, there's three definitions in the state fire code as to what the type of open burning is. Bonfire, recreational fire, and open burning, which open burning usually is all encompassing of burning large refues, trees, leaves, things of that nature, larger fires, bonfires, and recreational fires go underneath of what is considered to be ceremonial-type fires, three-foot round by two-foot tall type fires. So when we're using the open fire inside of the actual ordinance here, we're encompassing those three types of fires.
Without a definition, though?
The open fire is to define bonfire, recreational fire, or open flames, or open
Which would include a tiki torch?
No, but I can, we can put an amendment or take tiki torch out or define every individual fire. Would you like to have in, within the ordinance, bonfire and recreational, those definitions as per the state fire code?
I would suggest that the words "any open fire" be changed to "any outdoor burning" so that we are consistent with the definition. That's what I would suggest.
Well, then I would request that we add in bonfires and recreational fires to include that as an open fire also, not just open burning as what is defined in the state code.
So you want more detail in the definitions, would help?
Well, I'm really concerned about that really broad open fire, because, I mean, that technically could be a candle.
And if it's detailed, if the definition is more detailed, then that would hopefully preclude those sort of things. One of the things, I think, that if, under current regulations, the fire pits that people buy at Lowe's and stuff, are those legal or not legal? I mean, is that one of the issues?
The pre manufactured type that has the half-inch mesh design to it, those are the outdoor chimneys, outdoor fireplaces, things of that nature, and they are designed specifically for that purpose. That's what we're considering, the outdoor fireplaces, the outdoor chimneys.
So this is better defining those also, under the regulations, under what Pat is saying? Is that, does that make sense? I think people are being hung up on the definitions between burning and open flame, and so that just being a little more detailed, is that what would help for you?
And perhaps, if I may acquiesce to the chief again, the definitions he's sharing with us are from the state, and these changes and updates are in response to some of the changes with the state. Is that correct?
Correct. And the biggest change there, again, was the smoke as a nuisance being considered as what we usually hung our hat on. When somebody would call about it, we would get down there and say, no, there's no burning. But as the state defines, bonfires and outdoor fire utilized for ceremonial purposes, open burning, which you see the definition with already within the ordinance, and recreational fire, outdoor fire burning materials other than rubbish where the fuel being burned is not contained in an incinerator, outdoor fireplace, portable outdoor fireplace, barbecue grill, or barbecue pit, and has a total fuel area of three feet or less in diameter and two feet in height, for pleasure, religious, ceremonial, cooking, warmth, or similar purposes.
And those are state definitions.
Those are state definitions, yes. And if you would like, would you, my suggestion maybe is to clarify and put in what our definition of open fire is, shall consist of bonfire, recreational fire, open burning. This then does not limit to tiki torches, citronella candles, things of that nature.
And that makes sense, to be able to define it further, because we have a lot of different people from all over, different places, that have definitions of tiki torches as being different between bonfires and tiki torches, those sort of things. So I think that would just help to be able to do that, so we can do that before the next reading, and then Mayor...
We can amend and, or roll with it?
And I had a question about item C, where we used to have that you were, the chief was required, empowered, and required to issue a burn permit. So required has been eliminated, and what my question is, is under what circumstances would you issue a permit? Or what, under what circum, what's unclear to me is, under what circumstances I, as a citizen, would need to apply for a permit?
Anything greater than the 90 feet. So if you're in an area to where, yes, you do fit these parameters, and you have, your 95 feet or greater, or 90 feet or greater from your home, and decide you're going to do some open burning, a burning brush, things of that nature, then you could apply for the permit, and the permit would have these stipulations as to the size of the fire, when it can be burnt, the hours, they're no longer than three hours.
So maybe we could add that into this? Or is that necessary to add it in? Is that defined somewhere else?
Well, I think that's covered in the first paragraph. It says, "No person shall kindle fire elsewhere outside the 90 feet in the open air within the city without first obtaining a burn permit."
Got it. Okay.
So as the first sentence puts in the limit of the 90 feet, anything beyond that, if you can, areas where you can meet that, and say, well, I'm at 92 feet, I'd like to go ahead and burn.
Right.
Okay, come get your permit and say...
Got it, without permit, yeah, got it. Okay, that clarifies it. Thank you.
Other questions? Great. Well, thank you for coming by. And we will update the language and send it out, and then re-present it on the next council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. It's very helpful to have the expert in the room. It is. I mean that. Okay, moving on to, if there's no further questions for the chief or for this discussion, councilmembers or the public, thank you. Ordinance 52-19, an ordinance amending ordinance 19-19 to correct the parcel ID numbers, granting an enhanced access easement to allow utilities to property contiguous to Hope Drive, introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. This is doing exactly what the title is saying. We also had communications from ODNR's honcho, head honcho person in charge of this. So it's, the IDs were flipped, the number, parcel numbers were flipped, so they'll be fixed on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fall. Any other questions or comments pertaining to this? Ordinance 53-19, an ordinance amending Title 17, Municipal Income Tax, Chapter 17.01 in general, Section 17.01.18, Local Board of Review, Appeal to Local Board of Tax Review, introduced by Councilmember Fall.
This is another kind of housekeeping. When we first initially passed this municipal income tax language, we put it in a chapter that we would like to get rid of, and this will be put into the new chapter. As you remember, this was passed, though we did not like the preemption that the state has presented us, but we had to do this income tax change because it was state law and they made us. So, thank you. We'll put it in the right one because...
Any other, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Acting Mayor Nysli, anything you'd like to add?
Just thank council for considering this. I know it's based on the recommendation from our income tax administrator, Tina Timberman, that we pass this legislation so it shows we're in compliance.
Comment?
Yeah, comment?
Yeah, I just want to make the comment that even though we're now getting around to adopting this and putting it into our code, at no time has the city been out of compliance as far as the state of Ohio has been concerned. Our auditor and our income tax department was following the law as it was mandated by the state, even though we were protesting that we were being usurped in our local powers. But at no time were we ever in violation of the state law.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, proceeding. Announcements in other businesses, business, rather. We begin with a few bullet points here. First, a, there's a request for a motion to accept the auditor's April 2019 financial report.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of accepting the April 2019 auditor's financial report, please signify by sending aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you. We also have a request here to make a motion to accept the April 2019 credit card transactions. Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
All those in favor, or if there's any comments, all those in favor of accepting the credit card transactions of April 2019, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you, everyone. We have two appointments here. One is a reappointment, and one is an appointment to our disability board and our rec advisory board. We'll begin with the reappointment to the Commission on Disabilities. I believe, Councilmember McGee will address this.
Yes. I would like to submit to council for the reappointment of Carolyn Lewis to the disabilities board. She's currently a member of the board, has been an outstanding advocate for the disability community in Athens, and for, an advocate of the rights of all citizens as well. So I unfortunately do not know all of her credentials, but I do know she's been an outstanding advocate, and I certainly believe that it would behoove the city to appoint her, reappoint her to the board.
Thank you. We need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions or comments? And thank you, Councilmember McGee, for bringing this forward. Seeing no conversation or discussion, all those in favor of the reappointment of Ms. Lewis, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay, thank you. Thank you for your service work. And then, I believe, is it Councilmember Fall? Will speak to the new appointment on the rec advisory board.
I move that we make a new appointment of Shawna Switzer to the rec advisory board. This advisory board is really important. It does oversee a large part of the quality of life that we have in Athens, and they are a very important source of information and advice on things that range from open space management to recreational services such as basketball and soccer. So this is a new appointment, and it's for a two-year term.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and second that, if that's permissible. I don't see any opposition from the law director in the same.
Go for it.
So we have, and I believe, too, Councilmember Fall has some of the credentials or data. And so if there is a question or curiosity, just see some of that information from Ms. Switzer. Thank you. We have a motion, a second, all those in favor of the new appointment. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
And I want to follow that up with a thank you to all the people who come forward to volunteer. Every, all of the work, a lot of the work that we do as council is advised by these groups, and they've come forward with some really amazing ideas and thoughts. So I super appreciate it.
Thank you. It takes a village. Opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that were not covered on this evening's agenda. If so, please speak at the podium, and you will be granted three minutes of time. Doesn't appear that there's any desire this evening. If that's the case, I want to thank everyone for tuning in here in person, as well as TV LAN and the internet. I've had a joy with this opportunity to be president pro tem. This may be my last time, I don't know. We'll see what the summer entails. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, in a second, I guess? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Awesome. We are adjourned on or around 7:35 PM. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night. Enjoy the beautiful weather. Thank you.